Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Multnomah County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Jones-Dixon will be virtual for the first part of this meeting. Audience members, I want to start by asking you to please silence your electronic devices. I would also like to remind you that in addition to the audience in this room, we have people watching and listening online, so please consider your language and comments in testimony today. Today’s meeting is a hybrid board meeting. Some presenters and guests will appear in person, and some will appear virtually. For those presenting virtually, please mute your mic when not speaking, and when presenting, make sure to unmute your mic and turn on your camera. For those joining us in person to provide public testimony or present, please turn your mic on so that the green light is showing when you begin speaking and off when you’ve completed your remarks, so the red light is showing. May I have a motion on the consent calendar? Marina, I think the mics are locked. Let’s try that again. Can I have a motion on the consent calendar? Oh, it’s still.
So moved.
So, okay. So we have a motion from Commissioner Brim Edwards and a second from Commissioner Singleton.
Opportunity for public comments on non-agenda—
We need to vote.
Oh, I’m so sorry.
It’s okay. Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Brim Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones-Dixon? He was online. Not seeing him.
He may have lost the connection.
Chair Vega Peterson?
Yes, the consent calendar is approved.
Opportunity for public comment on non-agenda matters. This is a time for the board to hear public testimony and offer board deliberation. When it is your turn to speak, I’ll call your name and unmute you or call you to the presenter’s table. I’ll set a timer for three minutes when you begin speaking and announce when your time is up, at which point, please wrap up your sentence. Chair, we have six people signed up for a verbal testimony, and we received seven written testimonies, which were shared with board members and staff. I’m going to go ahead and call people. Francis Flores Tapia, Amanda Nicole Court, Ann Turner, and Wendy Foster.
Good morning. Anyone can begin as soon as you’re ready, and just don’t forget to state your name for the record.
I can go ahead.
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Francis Flores Tapia. Good morning, Chair Vega Peterson and esteemed members of the board. My name is Francis Flores Tapia. I am a proud Spanish-speaking Latina who serves as a clinician for the county’s School-Based Mental Health Program. Joining me are several other amazing clinicians, community partners, and supporters. I’d like to address the confusing and shocking proposal to terminate school-based mental health services. I use those words because I know mental health matters to you, and yet, here we are. I’ve read your mission statement and several articles where you claim that community mental health is a top priority. Just last spring, you reaffirmed your commitment by naming May Mental Health Awareness Month and talked about the need to increase access for all and culturally-specific services. You actually highlighted school-based mental health, which makes sense, because we do all those things. We provide services to everyone, even if they’re uninsured. 60% of our team provides culturally-specific services, and we provide mental health treatment for an array of diagnoses versus just doing prevention work. But I’m aware of the budget cuts, and I know you’ve got a lot on your plate. I empathize with you, because I too tend to have a lot on my plate. On a regular basis, as a school-based mental health clinician, I screen for suicide risk and intervene when children disclose they’d like to or already have attempted suicide. I intervene when children are self-harming and cutting a little too deep or when they’re using substances and engaging in risky behaviors. I support children who are in crisis because they’re finally disclosing to someone that abuse, sexual assault, or domestic violence has occurred, and they’re scared for their safety. Or they’ve gotten to the point where they want to hurt someone else and are on the verge of being expelled because of their behaviors. I help intervene when I learn that a child is attempting to run away without a housing option in mind or when a youth is withholding from eating and on the verge of being hospitalized. And I support so many newly-arrived immigrant youth who are missing their homes and families, isolated because they’re still learning English, and terrified of deportation. I say these things because I think it’s important to remind everyone what school-based mental health does to keep youth in our community safe. 26 clinicians across six school districts do these things, and so much more on a regular basis. I also say this as a warning of the catastrophic ripple effects that the removal of the safety net could have on so many vulnerable youth who may not qualify for services elsewhere. Our clients and families are terrified about losing these services. Outsourcing just won’t do it. It’ll only create a greater deficit. As you’ve mentioned before, Chair, there are not enough BIPOC providers out there. The system is difficult to navigate. There can be so many barriers. You’ve got the dream team right here. Please, I urge you to reconsider.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning. Yes, you can begin. Thank you.
That was really moving. Thank you. My name’s Amanda Court. I’m a nurse practitioner at the Franklin Student Health Center. I submitted written testimony, but I just wanted to tell you about a kid that Kate and I see. Kate is the school-based mental health provider at my school. Let’s call her Erica. She’s a young Black woman. She has a history of early childhood trauma, ADHD, and things were not going well at school: behaviorally, academically, socially. The school’s social worker referred her to our clinic because he knew we have a robust team of mental health and medical services. Erica wasn’t open to the idea of mental health services, but she came in for a different issue. And when she was there, I asked her if she maybe wanted to talk about what was going on, and she wasn’t sure. She had a hard time trusting people, which is pretty understandable. So I went across the hall, and I grabbed Kate, and she came into the room, and she met Erica. And that moment made the difference for Erica to be able to actually feel safe to come to that appointment, that first appointment. Every week, Kate meets with the school counselors and school social workers to update them on who’s on her caseload, so they know who’s being seen, and information about how that kid is doing in the school, academic and behavioral concerns, high flyers, what’s going on in the school within FERPA and HIPAA and everything, obviously. But working closely with the school, Kate was able to get this kid the academic support that she needed and the social support, access those school supports. When Erica got a boyfriend, Kate sent her back to me to talk about birth control, and she and I both spent time talking and listening to help her make decisions about the rest of her life. And being able to communicate with each other helped us to provide consistent, respectful support with these really big decisions. In the time I’ve known her, Erica has lived with several different family members, and throughout that time, Kate has been working with her, accessing her strengths through art therapy, trauma-focused therapy, and I have seen her blossom into a confident, calm, and self-possessed young woman. If it weren’t for Kate, Erica’s story would have been very different. No one could have taken her to counseling appointments, filled out the paperwork, paid for the visits. But Kate was there with her knowledge, relationships with the community, and her commitment to these youths. And she still is there. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, I’m Wendy Foster. I’m a Multnomah County resident, but I’m here today to speak as a nearly 20-year employee in the School-Based Mental Health Program, which, as you may know, is slated to be completely eliminated in the current proposed budget. I brought with me a gift from a client that I store in the same fireproof box where I keep my passport and daughter’s birth certificate. A student came to me some years ago, and within an hour of meeting her, I assessed her as being at high risk for suicide. I called her parents, who brought her to the ER, where she was admitted to the adolescent psychiatric unit. She kept an art journal of her progress, and after several months, came back to give it to me, telling me, “If you hadn’t been there that morning, I’m not sure I would still be here.” So now, no one like me will be there. No one will be there who can see a student quickly without having to make sure they have some sort of guaranteed payment prior. No one will be there to see undocumented students who cannot get any insurance coverage and are afraid to go anywhere else besides school. No one will be there in Far East County, my current location. Our services are sparse, if they exist at all. We are placed in the schools, but our work can take us to other places in the community. This year, I’ve been to juvenile court after one of my clients was arrested while her mother and I were scrambling to find an inpatient placement. Last year, I did home visits to a student who initially refused to go to school at all, but eventually agreed to go for part of the day. My first year, I went to the Pediatric Oncology Unit at Emmanuel after my client was diagnosed with leukemia. In the coming weeks, you’ll be having to make difficult decisions regarding the budget, and I do not envy you that task. I don’t think there are any frivolous programs. So I hope I have shown how essential our program is to preventing a real life-or-death situation for the county’s most vulnerable population: its children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning.
Vega Peterson and commissioners. My name is Ann Turner. I’m a retired primary care physician. I worked at Virginia Garcia Memorial Health Center, where we had a number of school-based health centers, so I certainly acknowledge the value of mental health services, probably the most important service we provided at those health centers. But I’m also a member and co-president of the Board of Directors of Organ Physicians for Social Responsibility and a member of the Risk Bond Coalition, so I’m speaking on a different topic this morning. And I’m here today to urge you to make good on your commitment that you made when you passed the resolution last December 19th to address the risks created by the fossil fuel infrastructure located at the critical energy infrastructure hub. It confirmed the board’s commitment to mitigate the risks to human life and the environment resulting from fossil fuels and require the fossil fuel industry to bear the full cost of damages in case of a worst-case spill or release of their products. The board urged the ordinance to be expedited with the goal of implementation no later than a year from the resolution. It recognized that catastrophic damage would devastate the entire state. We are grateful to Commissioners Moyer and Singleton and their staff for working to bring the strongest possible ordinance to assure that companies responsible for the pollution will pay for the cost of inevitable disaster and disasters and an ordinance that will encourage them to seismically upgrade their tanks as soon as possible as mandated by Senate Bill 1567. In this deeply troubling time of chaos and uncertainty at the federal level, we cannot count on help from the EPA or from FEMA. For example, yesterday, Lee Zeldin, the new administrator of the EPA, reported that the EPA plans to lay off 65% of their staff. In addition, more than 200 employees at FEMA, an already understaffed agency, have been laid off. President Trump has said that managing disasters is best left to the states themselves. Where does that leave us? No state, including Oregon, can afford the cost of major disasters. I know that you have many critical issues, including youth mental health, and I thank you for all you do. And I urge you to bring a financial assurances ordinance for the CEI out to a vote as soon as possible. We cannot prevent a disaster, but we can protect our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Libra Ford and Lightning. I’m not seeing Libra Ford.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Superhumanity Acts. Looks like President Lynn Peterson and Chair Peterson are going into a great battle. All I want to do is make sure that we have all the proper data to make sure we know where every dollar went, how it was spent, and the performance audits on everything. So I’m going to side with President Lynn Peterson and deny you any more money. Second issue is Elon Musk, Doge. Pretty simple. Waste, fraud, and abuse and incompetence. Do we have any of that in the federal government? Do we have a $36 trillion debt? Do we have deficits of, what, up to $2 trillion each year? Absolute pathetic, the way that the federal government is running themselves. And you know, you’re going to have to learn how to balance the budget, okay? And you’re going to have to keep track of where all the money goes. It’s very simple. When you write a check, where does it go? Who gets it? Was there performance done that you are satisfied with? What did you do last week on your job? Oh, that’s so traumatic to ask somebody that. I’m traumatized by that myself, that you would even ask me what I’ve done last week. But who do you work for? You work for the people. And every time you run up all this debt, who do you throw that debt on? The back of “We, the People.” Open your eyes, public. Elon Musk is going to save you money, drop your taxes, drop your interest rates, so you’ll be able to afford a house. And let me say this to you. This should have been done a long time ago. COVID-19 bankrupted the federal government. You were in bankruptcy. You should have declared bankruptcy and restructured all your debt. Now look where we’re at. Major layoffs, fighting for every dollar. Where’s it all going? Fraud, people receiving checks that aren’t even people. Pathetic federal government. Elon’s watching you close. He’ll get this under control. You’ll begin to look good again. You may not like his methods and how he operates. He’s the richest person in the world because he knows how to do business. Will the federal government be run like a business? It is now. Declare bankruptcy, federal government. Time to restructure.
Thank you.
Next, we have Daniel Dimello.
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, my name’s Daniel Dimello. I chair the Central Budget Advisory Committee, and I serve as a member of the Homeless Services Department Budget Advisory Committee. Like many of us, I was shocked by the Homeless Services Department budget that was released on Friday. And because our budget advisory committees this year have been given less time than any prior year, I spent the weekend reviewing the Homeless Services Department budget. And after asking a few questions about a few figures in that budget a meeting on Monday night, the Homeless Services Department released a updated budget on Tuesday, correcting technical errors. And you can imagine my dismay after having spent a weekend of volunteer time looking at this budget. But after looking extensively at this corrected budget, reviewing more than 90 program offers over the last two years, I’ve found continued extensive errors. More than 75% of the program offers in the Homeless Services Department budget incorrectly list the budget for that program offer in the prior year. In total, adding up the figures, more than $40 million is missing between the 2026 budget statements about the 2025 budget and the budget actually adopted by this commission. Now, that $40 million is more than enough to fund the Honorable Mayor Wilson’s plan to end unsheltered homelessness. Please give us information that is accurate. Please give us the time to review this budget extensively. I don’t know how to trust any other figure in this budget if it cannot accurately state the budget from the prior year. $40 million is more than enough to shelter every single person on our streets, and you have assembled more than 70 volunteers to spend time reviewing this budget. You’ve given us less information than any prior year and less time. Please make sure that that little bit of information you give us is accurate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, that is all the public testimony. I’ll move on to R1.
All right, thank you, Marina.
R1, Resolution to Recognize the Sandy River Watershed Council.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. We have Commissioner Brim Edwards, who moved. Commissioner Singleton, who’s second. Approval of R1. Thank you all for being here. One thing before folks go, I did just want to mention that what has been proposed in the budget is one step. My budget comes out in April, and then it goes to the board. So thank you all for being here. All right. Good morning. Thank you both for being here. This is a significant day because it is a real milestone in a multi-year-long effort between the county and community partners to reestablish a watershed council for the Sandy River. These moments are really a joy and in line with the approach that I have had, and I know the board has had over the years, in how we address issues in the county. The new work of the council is going to further the salmon restoration, and will center and advance equity. And I’m really excited for the board to hear all about it this morning. So I think the both-and approach of climate and equity is something that we can all be proud of and look forward to hearing more about. I also want to say thank you very much, Roy, for all of your work on this issue and also for volunteering during our recent severe weather response. So thank you for showing up there. I’m glad to have you here with today, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Vega Peterson. Commissioners, good morning. My name is Roy Emai. I’m with the Department of Community Services, Transportation Division, Water Quality Program. I’m here with my colleague and fellow board member of the Sandy River Watershed Council. We are seeking your approval for the resolution to recognize this new organization as the Local Watershed Council for the Sandy River, which is positioned among the many watershed councils across Oregon that work towards increasing salmon populations and restoring watershed health. The watershed council model of private and public partnerships is one of the key elements of the Oregon plan for the salmon and watersheds. And this is a plan from 1997. It continues today. Your recognition will allow the new organization to be eligible for the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board’s capacity grant, so to be among the many watersheds with state funding to be able to start doing some great watershed restoration work. This new organization is new, though you may be familiar with the Sandy River Watershed Council in its former incarnation. The original Sandy River Watershed Council formed in the mid-'90s, and it dissolved in 2021 under some financial pressure during the COVID pandemic. And during those years, the Multnomah County partnered with the Watershed Council on some key projects, especially with help with community support on two large culvert replacement or fish passage projects on Beaver Creek and Troutdale. Those were constructed in 2017 and 2019. Now, during the past several years, several former board members, including myself, started to rebuild the organization with a new foundation, and I have David Osborne, a fellow board member, to help to script that.
Thanks, Roy, and thank you all for having us today. Yeah, my name is David Osborne, and I’m a member of the new board for the Sandy Watershed Council as well as somebody that lives really close to the river and have been really excited to lean into the unfortunate demise of the old council to really find the opportunities to kind of inhabit some of the things that you talked about in your introduction in terms of finding those intersections between equity and conservation, climate engagement, and engaging with communities. And so what I wanted to share was just a little bit of the process that we went through and then some of the product that we came to, so you can get a sense of kind of where this new council is starting. So as I think you’re familiar, we engage in a long community needs assessment, working with consultants. That community needs assessment was presented to the community, and then out of that came a diverse group of people that were working on a kind of charter commission for about a year. And I was also part of that group, and we worked together for a year to develop a charter for the new Sandy River Watershed Council that we thought could kind of live into the opportunity to build something from the ground up. So I just wanted to share with you a couple of the pieces from that charter that we’re using to create this new organization, hopefully with your support today. So the vision that we came up with for that was, “We envision the Sandy River watershed as a place of celebration, connection, and spirituality for everyone to engage with and be accountable to. Wildlife, fish, trees, community members are all neighbors dependent on one another. The watershed is sustainable, cared for, and communities that are most impacted benefit.” And then we identified the mission of this organization as “to be a visionary and inclusive weaver and convener of community collaboration, to build a shared vision and to coordinate action in the Sandy River watershed as a thriving, living place deeply connected to the surrounding communities.” And then the values we identified emerging from that community needs assessment that we hope to guide the work included: inclusion through relationship, in which we’ll work to build community and relationships with the intention and care across diverse cultures, identities, generations, and interests; the value of diverse perspectives, where we work to uplift diverse connections and relationships to the Sandy River watershed with humility, respect, and love; the value of a culture of care, where we practice a culture of joy, connection, learning, care, and repair; the value of equitable power sharing, where we work to share power in decision-making, prioritizing the most impacted and historically excluded voices; the value of indigenous connections, where we work to center and embrace the indigenous connections and knowledge of the watershed, acknowledging the impacts of colonization and displacement of communities; and finally, the value of innovating for resilience and justice, where we work to explore and implement ideas and innovations about our natural systems in ways that move us towards resilience and justice. So I hope these kind of give you a sense of both the process, the community needs assessment, and how we work to integrate that into the charter that is the kind of foundation with which the new board is trying to build now from the ground up. So thank you.
Thank you so much, David.
Yeah, thank you, David. If I can make a closing statement. So this new charter, you know, centering diversity, equity, and inclusion, you know, restores not only watersheds, but it restores the community’s connection to it, you know, to work with indigenous culture and knowledge, to share the cultural values across a spectrum of people who feel connected to the place and to grow that sense of stewardship. You know, this is the vision. And this is kind of a new element to what the old Watershed Council had done. You know, we have interim board to get things started over the next one or two years. That includes Lily Yasi, Eric Briggs, Macy Patel, and then David and myself. And we’re very excited to get started. So with the recognition by the board, we can get started, and we’d be happy to answer any questions, yeah?
Thank you so much, Roy. We will go to the board to see if there are questions about this. I think I’ll begin today with Commissioner Moyer. Good, all right. Commissioner Singleton.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you both for your work. Standing up a new volunteer council is no small task. So I know a lot went on behind the scenes that we didn’t actually talk about today. I just have one question about, is this something that falls under the requirements for formal tribal consultation? And if not, how will we be engaging with the tribes and indigenous communities in particular?
Yeah, thanks for that question. I don’t know what the requirement is because this is funded by the state and also from private philanthropy. But we do have a board member, Lily Yasi, who’s a member of the Dene or Napa Nation, on the board. We have connections with the Confederate tribes of the Warm Springs, and we also have connections with the Columbia River Intertribal Fish Commission and other indigenous community members doing restoration in the Sandy. So we do have, I think, a very strong and positive relationship going into this work, and this is one of the central elements that I think we are really excited about.
Thank you. I do think it’s important to figure out if it does fall under formal consultation because that process is so specific, and we want to make sure we don’t cross any lines there and do that government-to-government work that we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brim Edwards. I don’t have any questions. I’m partly in support. Thank you so much. Commissioner Jones-Dixon.
No questions either. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just will reiterate, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the intention in creating this or recreating this council, and I just really appreciate the collaboration and the work that’s gone over the years between Multnomah County and so many of the advocates and folks involved for what we can do to make the Sandy River a healthier place for both people and fish and make sure that we are moving forward in our goals around climate inequity. So thank you. Thank you both so much. Marina, did we have any public testimony on this item?
Yes, Charles Johnson.
All right. If you want to step back, and then we will have public testimony at this point.
I’m Bridgette Green Charles, Simca.
I'm Bridge Green Charles Simkins Johnson and thank you very much, Commissioner Singleton, for raising the issue of tribal consultation. What else could I say about this? Put a fork in it. We just had a presentation that was definitely about a council for a watershed and got no facts about the Sandy River. And that's why I said, put a fork in it. Because if we follow the Sandy River till we get to the edge of the Multnomah County line towards Sandy, Oregon, there's a fork in it. And of course, the Sandy River flows through Oxbow Park. Oh, that's not a Multnomah County park, that's a metro park. And then it makes its way out towards Troutdale. It was, it's been very interesting moving to Oregon, having survived here now for 12 years, most of that time while Cascadia and the various homeless service entities helped me maintain homelessness, but not housing. And so the scope of this presentation, the fact that we talk about indigenous inclusion, but the issue of tribal council just unfortunately underscores the fact that there's an epidemic of ignorance in America. Now, the Sandy River, the whole 90 kilometers of it does deserve some attention and a council and it's good that there's state funding, but it's jolting to come in and have heard that, there's a very familiar topic to me, problems with the homeless services budget and that somehow we think if we build a watershed council that's fully funded by the state and doesn't take any money from the county, everything will be okay while we discontinue mental health services to youth. And unfortunately, you know, that was just public testimony, so I don't have to be as hard on them as y'all, but it's like, how much, please? How much is it costing to get people in the school district to do these things compared to the budget that the state's going to spend? The reason I ask this, of course, is because we know there are resources in our area, even though some people are worried about a little doom loop cycle in our economy. You know, there are probably people in Oregon who have given so much money to the Republican Party that it's a bigger amount than what it costs to provide mental health services to our youth. So, in addition to perfecting the budget, we also need to be making sure that if we can't tax people as we need to, that when it comes to critical services, whether it's the fact that we don't waste the Sandy River, there's a whole website, if you go on there, "Don't Waste the Sandy River." They're worried that the city of Sandy downstream might release improperly treated water into the Sandy River. So, a lot of our place, I look forward to the mayor getting here and going on to that debacle.
Thank you. All right, Marina, can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Moyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brim Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones Dixon?
Yes.
Chair Vega Peterson?
Hi, the resolution is adopted. All right, and we have R2 coming up next, but that is time certain, so that means that it cannot begin before 10:35. We will welcome Mayor Keith Wilson at that time to go over his blueprint for ending unsheltered homelessness. But until that time, we will be in recess, so we will recess until 10:35. Thank you. Multnomah County Commission, and move on to R2. So Marina, can you read it into the record, please?
R2, briefing on Mayor Wilson's blueprint for ending unsheltered homelessness.
Great, thank you Marina. Mayor Wilson, thank you so much. We appreciate the opportunity for you to present on the shelter strategy that you have. I think a few of us have had the opportunity to see this presentation, but it's important for me, for our full board to hear it as a group and be able to have a conversation about it with you today. So again, thank you so much for making time out of your busy schedule to be here to do that. And I see that we have the slide presentation all set up to go, so I will turn it over to you.
First of all, Chair, thank you so much. Commissioners, I appreciate this privilege. I think this is the sixth presentation in about four or five weeks and so, thank you for this honor to bring this proposal and this program to you. We face an overwhelming crisis. Too many of our neighbors are sleeping and suffering on our streets and heroic work has gone into helping our neighbors and thousands have been helped already. That work must continue. What I'm talking about today is a plan to relieve the crisis and to relieve the suffering in our community. And when we do that, the other part of our system will be elevated and even more effective. And the entire Portland community will be able to recover from this crisis. It's no secret that our housing ladder is broken. Homes and apartments have become more expensive and new construction costs are growing. Thousands of our neighbors have fallen into, have fallen out of stable housing due to unemployment, poverty, eviction, as we talked about yesterday, family conflict, domestic violence, medical issues, addiction, mental illness, and so many more reasons. For those without stable housing, what's the bottom rung of the housing ladder? For our unsheltered neighbors, it's become a tent, a tarp, or an unsafe RV. Two-thirds of Oregon's homeless live unsheltered, representing one of the highest unsheltered homeless rates in the nation. We cannot turn our eyes from this suffering. We must change the way we think about this crisis. Next slide. Thank you. Portland has the highest unsheltered homeless rate in our history and the unsheltered are dying in unprecedented numbers. The recent domicile unknown report shocks the conscience. Every conversation and working session we have about unsheltered homelessness must reflect the moral imperative this number represents. We cannot look at this chart and think in terms of three-year or five-year or 10-year plans any longer. We must think in terms of the most good we can do right here, right now. We must change the way we think about this crisis and immediately and decisively respond. Next slide. All of Portland is impacted by this humanitarian crisis. Ten years ago, a police officer would respond to a priority call in six minutes. Today, in your most urgent time of need, it takes an officer on average to respond in 24 minutes. And the 456 deaths that occurred in 2023 on the streets of Portland are only one part of the story. Forty percent of all Portland firefighter callouts are to address the unsheltered homelessness. I ride with fire often. There is one person who went to the Center of Excellence in Maryland, was recently released. He was in there for 30-day PTSD affliction. And you could see in the firehouse kitchen while talking to him, he says, Keith, I've just lost hope. He said, I used to grade my job as an A. I had the best job in the world. He says, now, on my best day, it's a D. Forty percent of gun homicides are now of the homeless. Fifty-three percent of public defenders' clients are the homeless and we have a public defender crisis. When the majority of that workload and clients are things that we can do to assist, we can take action and turn that number around. And the public wants change. Eighty-six percent disapprove of Portland's homelessness strategy and 82% are asking for more shelter. Firefighters, paramedics, even public defenders, they're all overwhelmed and we see it every day. Our systems aren't designed to operate normally while our first responders simultaneously serve on the front lines of the biggest humanitarian crisis our city has ever faced. Here is why the public disapproves of our current strategy. They have begun to associate increased spending and the promises we've made with increased suffering, not progress. Our victories ring hollow when the public sees unsheltered homelessness and domicile unknown deaths rise year after year after year. Next slide. Livability and economic issues are compounding. Our job creation in the Portland market is the worst in the nation. We see more and more closed storefronts. In one downtown neighborhood in 2023, they had 95 closed storefronts. Last year, 115. Behind every closed storefront is a broken dream. We're losing our identity as a small business town and a community of entrepreneurs. The Urban Land Institute, which recently put out their ranking of most desirable cities, which rates it on real estate, livability, development investment, ranked the Portland market 80th out of 81. What's astounding about that number is seven years ago, we were the third most desirable city in the United States. And our tax base is declining, facing difficult decisions that we are actively in discussions today about. Property taxes are falling, business license taxes are falling, and the trend is to continue unless we arrest the decline. The solution isn't complex. If we restore cleanliness and safety, compassion and livability, we can restore our identity. Next slide. Every one of these pictures shows a person I care about. Trevor is in the movable shack on the multi-use path. He's from Seattle. His father, John, built him that. Trevor suffers from SPMI and addiction. His father just wants to do anything he can to help his son. The photo on the right is my neighbor Elizabeth with her daughter. She lives downtown at the Greyhound Station Shelter. Some nights, she chooses to stay in a tent. With no engagement requirements or stay limits, she's been living this way for over two years. Doug, the bottom right, he was dumped by emergency room security guards in a public park. He was naked except for that blanket. And he had chest pains in which were all Portland does not have enough emergency shelters or detox beds and our hospitals have become the shelters of last resort. To function, they force the unsheltered into parks or onto city buses to nowhere. Hospitals have a name for these souls. They're called Gomers. Get out of my emergency room. The bicycle in the background isn't his, it's mine. I rode up, I saw what was happening. I pleaded with the guards to take him back in and I could help. I have shelters. I'll provide shelter. I did. I called a taxi. I lifted him up, put him in the back of the taxi. I know Doug was cared for that night, but I don't know what happened the next night. But this is happening every single night in Portland and if you go into an emergency room at midnight, you will see de facto shelters. We have to recognize the system isn't working and we're defraying this and putting it on to others that do not have the resources to address this crisis when it is our responsibility to act. Suffering people don't get better living on the street. Living unsheltered puts up daunting barriers on the journey to addiction recovery, mental health treatment, job counseling, and family reunion. On the street, individual outreach is hampered and those we want to help are too consumed with day-to-day survival to rebuild their lives. We must shift from a maintenance approach to a crisis response. We have devoted people who have been treating this crisis for years. We have, we have to listen to them and we have to mobilize our efforts to this moment. Next slide. Compassionately revitalize our community begins with sheltering our unsheltered. We must prioritize emergency nighttime shelters first and then move on to day centers and solutions like Build for Zero. We're not building from scratch. We'll use what has worked in the past, both in Portland and other peer cities. Emergency nighttime shelters are important, but they're not intended to provide a comprehensive solution to the humanitarian tragedy on our street. We'll use emergency nighttime shelters because we have to treat the crisis like a crisis and respond with a full disaster recovery strategy to compassionally and cost-effectively shelter unhoused population. We will end public camping and once again prioritize basic norms of sanitation and safety. It's a necessary step to repair, restore, and revitalize the quality of life, not just for the housed, but for the unhoused. We are in communication with Build for Zero right now. I'm happy to report Roseanne Hagerty has come to join our team. Community Solutions is stepping up. We have a team and we're meeting on a regular basis and we want to partner with Multnomah County to supercharge the by-name list and your efforts with our efforts as well. Next slide. How Portland Must Respond to This Crisis. Next slide. At the beginning of 2024, when this snapshot was taken, we had about the same number of Portlanders sheltered as we did 13 years ago. However, unsheltered homelessness and spending has skyrocketed. Portland now has the highest unsheltered homeless rate in the nation, except for a few cities in California. This is counter to cities I have studied or have met with, like Boise, who has less than 200 living unsheltered on their street tonight, but has a housing cost higher than Portland. Or Boston, who has less than 200 people living unsheltered on their street and again, higher housing costs and is the same size as Portland. And/or Philadelphia. Commissioner Singleton, studying that one, mostly uses nighttime shelters. They have less than 800 people living unsheltered on their street, but is twice the size of Portland. Portland, we have 5,398. What do they knew that we don't? What do they know that we don't? They rely on nighttime emergency shelter to flex up and flex down to match the needs in their communities. It's not the only distinction, but it's the key distinction. Next slide. Cost-effective, scalable emergency night shelters are not a replacement to other housing programs. We must continue to invest in project turnkey, state fresh villages, temporary alternative shelters, 24-hour supportive shelter, and supportive housing all have a critical role to play and we must continue to take any capital we have and continue to put it and invest it into the solution for homelessness. Emergency shelters provide a no-wrong door. It's the first step for those who are ready to move off the streets and a safeguard for those who slip through the cracks of our complementary programs. They're also cost-effective pressure valves that freeze up resources to help the system function. They're low-barrier, trauma-informed spaces that utilize existing facilities like community centers or churches or empty businesses that are empty at night and available. They're staffed with professionals, volunteers, and people with lived experience. All adults are welcome. We never turn anybody away. But minors and families with children are handled as part of a separate system that Multnomah County has always been the jurisdiction to provide care for. Sobriety is not required, but drugs, alcohol, and weapons are not allowed. They're cost-effective. Nighttime emergency shelters utilize existing facilities, eliminating construction and most other capital costs. In comparison, transitional alternative shelters often cost millions while providing fewer beds. In addition to low upfront, low upfront costs, nighttime emergency shelters are far cheaper to maintain. A good example is we cut the ribbon on Oak Street last week. This, over 24 months from the time we purchased that land until that first bed night, and cost millions. They, nighttime emergency shelters are scalable. The most important benefit of this is that they're quick to set up. By utilizing existing buildings, nighttime emergency shelters can often begin serving the community in days. In addition to being quick to set up, they can be closed just as easily when the need reduces. They focus on a return to stay limits, not just the nighttime, but the entire system now can go back to that strategy of helping people through the system. They want to encourage people to engage with services and move from emergency shelter. The goal is to focus on getting these souls into emergency, pardon me, permanent housing, whatever that may look like. Without this rule, there's often little incentive for individuals to address their root cause of homelessness. Case workers must also retain the ability to extend based on how best to serve that individual's needs. Generally, they are generally near transit corridors to provide easy access for staff, for volunteers, and for guests, and they're always complemented with day centers. Day centers are supportive, are supportive, trauma-informed facilities that serve as a warm handoff from the nighttime shelters. They link people to a comprehensive network of services that include meals and showers, clean clothes, storage, transportation, mental health services, addiction, family reunifications, and a path to permanent housing, which is our goal. Next slide. And I'm happy to say the response from neighborhoods, businesses, nonprofits have been overwhelming. It's so much more than I dared to hope. We had one business community come forward with 40 properties to match with the 30 that we already had on January 1st when I took office. Fifteen nonprofits recently showed up to a listening session on what our program is for RFP and we have the next follow-up in the next two weeks. There are unsheltered people who are ready right now. They are ready for shelter for addiction and mental health services and to be reunited with their loved ones. It's time for us to turn to them and say that Portland is ready too. We must raise the lowest level of the housing ladder We must raise the lowest level of the housing ladder from destitution on the street to a warm, safe bed for everyone tonight in Portland. And while 24-hour shelters have an important role, converting from emergency nighttime shelters to a 24-hour model has downsides. In Portland, changing to a 24-hour strategy roughly tripled the expenses, expenses without adding one bed night. Highly experienced shelter operators were defunded, and new operators with innovative solutions to homelessness, mental health, and addiction were shut out. In addition, 24-hour shelters are far less capable of taking walk-ins. Given the struggles our unsheltered neighbors often face with addiction and mental illness, these delays made it far less likely they would voluntarily come to a shelter once a bed was made available. The delay forced them to adapt to a life on the street, and many have chose to stay. Next slide. In Portland, we're activating an incident management system to address and elevate this to crisis, and we've activated our Portland Bureau of Emergency Management. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Skylar Brocknapp, who I am happy to report is the 2024 Betsy Ames Leadership Award recipient for her exceptional commitment and dedication to improving the city of Portland, one of our top public officials last year. I'm very proud to have you in the second chair.
Thanks, Mayor. Chair Commissioners, good morning. Skylar Brocknapp, Director of Portland Solutions. I'm just going to run through exactly what the mayor was just talking about with our new incident command structure, really taking that emergency management approach. We've worked with our Director of Emergency Management at the city of Portland on some of what he's seen in other cities that he's worked in, and really looking at maybe what our system could add and the missing link, basically, that the mayor talked about. So I know a lot of us worked on this severe weather emergency a few weeks ago. I worked with a lot of folks at Multnomah County, working really hard every single day with different outreach teams and staff to staff those different shelters. One thing that was helpful was having those 200 emergency beds, overnight beds that we had through the Salvation Army that the mayor and the chair had stood up at the beginning of January, just to add some of that surge capacity. So what you'll see here is just a graphic that shows what a number of communities have, usually that surge capacity during seasonal months, when you might need a little more shelter space, folks are really looking for those shelter beds, and you don't have to pivot immediately to that disaster sheltering strategy at a moment's notice. So it can really help the system to do what the mayor is talking about of plusing up or plusing down depending on the need. Next slide, please. So this is just the basics of the incident management approach, emergency management, external partnerships, citywide alignment and management by metrics. So obviously partnering with different jurisdictions, different nonprofits, different partners to create that alignment within the city. We have started this incident command structure within the city of Portland. A lot of folks from the Portland Solutions team are doing a lot of that work and filling those spaces right now, similar to the work they've been doing, but really taking that every single day, what are we delivering kind of approach. Next slide, please. This is just how we've set this up. So an executive policy group is required just to provide that leadership to direct that incident command structure under the mayor's leadership and kind of his vision and priorities. We also have a multi-agency coordination group, which includes partners from Multnomah County and others jurisdictional partners, like I mentioned. And then obviously that feeds into that structure, and then the city and regional partners. We want this to be a regional approach. We want to make sure that we're embracing all the pieces of the system and filling in those gaps as needed. Next slide, please. Part of the initial structure of this incident command system has resulted in immediate neighborhood response. So coordinating personnel and resources, and we're working closely with Portland Street Response and our city outreach team. How can we better coordinate? How can we better use the resources currently at the city of Portland without increasing personnel to actually have a better approach to the areas around different shelters, to different neighborhoods that might be hosting a day center, for example? Proactive engagement with individuals, seeing, do you need somewhere to go? Can we provide transportation? Can we connect you with day services, storage, for example? And then being directly responsive to those surrounding neighborhoods. So whether it's a good neighbor agreement, or whether it's just those direct communications to be responsive to neighbors, that's been really important to the mayor and to the process of standing up shelter very quickly in these spaces. We're also looking at standing up a housing strike team or housing command center. I'm very open to different terms of what to call it, but really coordinating a lot of the different housing resources that we already have in this community to better connect folks who are in shelter with the permanent housing opportunities. So whether it's partnering with YouAll, PHB, Home Forward, potentially Housing Connector or Community Solutions, anyone who's really interested in partnering on connecting folks to available units, figuring out the ways to maximize any subsidies or benefits to get folks into permanent housing. And really cutting down on those potential barriers, like you'll see on the slide. I think maximizing benefits, for example, Medicaid reimbursement, I know we talked about yesterday, that's a huge goal for the homelessness response action plan, and is already something that we're partnering on with the county. But this is just one way that we can maximize the resources in our community. I think we'll focus also on housing navigation. This is something that is kind of new to the city, but we are trying to think innovatively and creatively about the best ways and any possible ways to connect folks with any of these potential housing opportunities. Next slide, please. I'm just going to run you through our example kind of budget for this process, for this program, and just some of the numbers, how we got to that $28.1 million. I'll show you at the end, but the mayor's also kind of run through this, I think, with most of you as well. And then if you have any questions, happy to dive in, but I'll run through it pretty quickly. So this is based on existing opportunities, kind of existing contracts within the city. We have some of the costs associated with the 24-hour congregate, with the temporary alternative shelter sites and the safe rest villages, as the mayor mentioned, a higher-cost service. Nighttime emergency shelter costs alternatively are much cheaper, as you can see the examples that are currently within our community and our system. So we're looking at approximately a $35 cost per night. Again, that's just subject to change depending on those contracts that we're negotiating, but that's kind of our average that we're looking at. We're also looking at day center costs based on what's in our community currently. So Rose Haven, for example, provides a great daytime service, costs about $54, almost $55, and we're using that cost kind of as our baseline for day centers services as well. Next slide, please. These are numbers for the homelessness response system and the homelessness response action plan, as well as the mayor's priorities and his campaign promise. So I'm just going to run you through quickly how we got here. We're seeing a need for about 3,000 shelter beds, based on the homelessness response action plan commitment of 1,000 beds, the public-private partnerships that could provide about 500 beds, and then the city of Portland really stepping in and this incident command structure in partnership with other regional jurisdictions to provide those 1,500 additional nighttime beds. Again, that could increase or decrease depending on the need, but that's our initial assessment based on the numbers. With those numbers and that cost of $35 a night on average, it would be about $52,500 in total nightly costs. Again, there are additional costs that we all know about, but transportation and insurance and, you know, outreach workers, like Portland Street Response, or city outreach team, or other outreach workers who are actually connecting folks to additional services. We're looking at a guest-to-staff ratio of 20 to 1, or 1 to 20, and that would require 75 individual staffing. So we're just looking at those numbers. Every day, this incident command structure will look at how many beds we've put online, how many beds we need, what the utilization was that night before, how much it's going to cost to add different pieces of the puzzle, what different providers or different facilities might require. But these are our basic numbers that we're working off of. Next slide, please. Thank you. For the remaining fiscal year, the mayor has put together these specific metrics that we want to uphold. So again, this incident command system and structure, this team is looking every day at how many beds have we created? How many beds have we stood up? How much did it cost? What else do we need? These are the numbers that we're working off of for the end of the fiscal year, so trying to get to that 450-bed mark by the end of June. We're well on our way, about 250 right now, 200 that are stood up, 50 beds at Bybee Lakes that are coming online after we kind of finish contracting with them and they get staffed up in the next couple of weeks. We're really excited about all of those beds, but obviously 200 more to go for the end of the fiscal year. Next slide, please. This just shows the flexing up, flexing down potential, depending obviously on the need or any context or circumstances within the community, but this is just an example of what that could look like. So theoretically, we would increase to that 1,500 number by December 1st, and then we would see a need throughout the winter months, usually when folks are more interested kind of in this overnight shelter capacity, and then a plusing down as the need abates. So connecting folks to different services, theoretically, you'd be able to close some of those shelter sites that you wouldn't need, but you'd have that immediate ability. You wouldn't have to decommission a site. It wouldn't take months and months like it does for some of our other sites. Next slide, please. This just shows the continuing decrease throughout 2026, the end of 2025 and 2026. Next slide, please. And so you see the day center cost, that's in addition to that 15 million you saw for the overnight shelter capacity. You have the almost $12 million cost of four different day centers that serve about 150 people. Again, basing that capacity off of Rose Haven, but we could have to change that based on the facility type, obviously, or the provider capacity. But in essence, this would serve 600 folks at that $55 mark a day per person, and then creating that total of $12 million. Storage is also a huge component of this. We're basing our storage costs off of our current day storage capacity, which is an Old Town, the city of Portland partners with Central City Concern to serve about, it's actually about 450-person capacity at that site. We wanted to be conservative, so we put a 300-person capacity for that storage location, and then adding three more, basically, facilities. So we already know that there are some day center capacity in, in Multnomah County, in the city of Portland. There's one kind of obvious day storage capacity. We're looking at all of those resources on the table, seeing what's necessary and what location, and then looking to be geographically diverse through all the districts. Next slide, please. So these are just the totals, the 15 million, the 12 million, and then the storage cost of about $864,000 creates that $28.1 million number that I think all of you are aware of that would pay for the mayor's plan for this next fiscal year. We're already well on our way with that partnership opportunity of those 200 beds and looking to add at every moment that we can, so evaluating different facilities and potential locations. These are just going to be our new capacity for emergency shelter in the fiscal year after, so '26, '27. Obviously, you'd be decreasing based on the need. That could plus up or plus down, but this is just kind of our approach, knowing that we would be really targeting, connecting folks to those different services. The total for the biennium then would be a little over $52 million, so that's two fiscal years. Next slide, please. I wanted to also mention the homelessness response action plans focus on behavioral health. We know that this is super important in partnership with all these other services that we're talking about. Multnomah County is already leading the way on a lot of these different pieces, and we're already working with your government relations, folks, and at the state and at the legislature to really push for a lot of these pieces to be added to our community. We know they're desperately needed. Commissioner Pram Edwards is already standing up a sobering center, which I think will be a huge part of this plan. We're really excited about that. We're also excited about the 74 residential treatment beds that Central City Concern is bringing online in partnership with the state and the county and the city, and those will be online in May, is my understanding. So some of these are already well underway, but we know we still need psychiatric treatment beds, we still need some civil commitment beds, we still need additional residential treatment beds, and we want to keep pushing for a lot of those pieces as well. Next slide, please. Mayor?
And to, and to comment off of what Sky just said, my commitment to all five of you, on those behavioral health or addiction services, whatever, you have our absolute 100% support to wrap arms together to go to any jurisdiction to ask for funding, because that is part of this journey. We have to have a robust treatment system to go along with anything we do. We have to address that root cause, and it's really critical we work together, especially on that previous slide. We've initiated the crisis response. Go back one, please. Go back two. There you go. One more.
One more.
Yeah, thank you so much. But we've already begun, and we've set up 200 emergency beds. And the word is going out, and people are coming, the more we take care of the folks who are ready, the more freed of our resources and momentum we'll have to coach those who aren't. And I want to thank you, Chair. First call I made as mayor-elect, and that relationship and close partnership resulted in opening these beds within days of assuming office. We've also continued, as Sky had noted, we've committed two and 50 additional beds we'll be opening up at the Bybee Lakes Hope Center shortly. We're excited about these because these are a plus-up from what we had budgeted for nighttime. These are 24-hour shelters, and we're able to really get into those for a very close cost of that initial. So we'll open anything we can where we have the ability to rapidly help and care for individuals. And what makes these exciting is that these are going to serve homeless individuals recovering from substance use disorder and with wraparound services, including transportation. We are working with the jails, with the hospitals to provide that link so these entities aren't releasing to homelessness. We're trying to make sure that they recognize, let's address the inflow through Built for Zero Community Solutions. We are working with those jurisdictions right now, and they're coming to us, and Hooper Detox is another one. We want this resource to make sure that it's available to them, so we're never releasing to homelessness, which is that inflow part. Emergency overnight shelters are the final life-saving safeguard that our city is going to offer. My work with Shelter Portland proved we could find a bed for everyone in the city, and our ultimate goal is to get our most vulnerable into affordable housing and to provide the supportive services they need. If they experience setbacks in their journey home, they also need to know there's an emergency option that is never the street. And invite each and every one of you to a tour. I've been giving tours to my city councilors, the state reps, to senators, to VIPs, and to electeds who can help in this at the shelter. I have Steve Novick and Rep. Pham, I think, next week. I invite any of you, if you want to come out, have dinner, and just check out the nighttime shelters. You'll see the dignity and the decency in providing safe night care for those that are working the next day or are cold, whatever their need may be. As long as the unsheltered homeless is on our streets, we must treat it like a crisis, and we are creating and addressing it as a crisis response. Next slide. And we're building a movement. We're building a movement, and I'm happy to say that I've been shaking trees all over Oregon, and it's resulting in a lot of support. And everybody is stepping up, and there's an outpouring, and they want to help turn this movement into action. And when I look at the people I meet every day, I don't see what I can or can't accomplish in a year or dwell on principled disagreements. I look forward to the helpers, and I'm happy to say that, and I've spoke with each and every one of you, I know you're going to join us in this journey that we're going to go on this year. So thank you for this, Corrigan. If you have questions, would love to have an opportunity to answer them.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you so much, Sky, for the presentation. I'm sure there will be questions and comments from the board, so we will move over to them, and we will start with Commissioner Singleton.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mayor and Sky. I know we've had a lot of conversations to date, so some of this will be just bringing into the open some of the discussions that I've had with both of you, and a couple of questions that I do have. I want to start by saying that it is vitally important, and I think you all heard from most of us, if not all of us, yesterday, that our goal is to really look at what is our system across investments at both jurisdictions? And how are we assessing what shelter needs we have? What is the right mix of overnight? What is 24-hour, SRVs, hotel motel, clean and sober, low barrier? Right? We have all of these sorts of models, and the more that we can get the data to tell us what is the average length of stay, what are the placement outcomes, all of the pieces that we need to know to make thoughtful investments, that's the work I'm hoping that we will embark on after this conversation. I do have a couple of questions about the presentation. Can you tell me more about what reunification means and this kind of idea of being able to ramp down in such a fast fashion?
Let me take the high level, and then I'll have Sky. When looking at the county's reunification timeframe, it takes 14 days from the point somebody wants to get home. So we're trying to compress that to 14, to 14 hours. And so, so long as an officer, an outreach worker, or somebody has the ability, we're linking them, so long as there's a warm handoff, a mom, a dad, a friend, a resource, we're helping them get back home within hours. And so that's what reunification, so we're making sure that that budget is important. I've learned that the most successful cities I've visited golf cities I've visited Gulfport Phoenix others their reunification programs Wichita Salt Lake City they're immediate and they often focus on making sure that not 24 hours lapse because in a 14 day leg you may lose that person especially you might lose them in the community with 5,000 people living it's really hard to reengage and find people because they might be moving out so reunification is just actively helping that person get back home when they're ready so long as there's a warm handoff
Yeah I can I just need to speak to some examples in the last few weeks one example is a young man who had a warrant and we were able to work with the DA's office to clear that and connect him back with his mom in North Carolina so get him on a plane when they talk to her so there's just some examples of when we're able to do that obviously that's not everybody but there are some examples of folks who are asking for that and have that connection and our outreach teams who know the families of certain individuals frankly because they've been working on the streets for a long time in Portland and say you know what I'm ready to go home we had a young woman last week who said you know what I'm ready I've been in Portland for years on the street and she's from Ohio and we connected her with her brother and he called back the outreach worker and was crying on the phone when she got home so I think it works really well in certain cases obviously that warm handoff is critical but we're trying to just be creative and innovative and get folks connected to any resource we can
Sky what was the turnaround time pardon what was the turnaround time on those two anecdotes
Oh yes in the same day
So
So I think this gets to what I think my point is that this is actually an allowable use of existing client assistance dollars and that I think that's another part of what we should be evaluating when we're looking at the system I've done a lot of reunification and that's part of why I wanted to ask at what you were getting at before the ticket home program existed this is something providers did but I also think that being in the city of Portland you get different access and response to the DA's office for example than an outreach worker would and so the question becomes how do we create a system where it doesn't matter what your title is if you're doing this work you get the same kind of access so thank you for talking about that a little bit and I think there's a couple of pieces to clean up you mentioned the RFP I'd like for us in the meantime to be looking at things between our two entities that we can be cleaning up and doing better on the RFP was a surprise for some of our providers and I think sowed some confusion for people because their contracts are with the county and I know there's things on your all's end that has been a challenge for you and how the county has engaged I would like us to commit to addressing those issues before we're even talking about the longer term system let's fix the pieces that are struggle for both jurisdictions and because you mentioned Bybee Lakes I have to just say I hope that we are not allowing Bybee Lakes to charge people for beds that we are already paying for if they are charging people for that we're already paying for those beds I hope that is going into an account that leaves with them when they leave that shelter so I just wanted to say that out loud and on
Agreed Yes no it's top of mind yes agree
I do think that we've had I know there were some discussion in the cost at the last sorry so many acronyms the homeless response system steering and oversight committee about the cost and maybe that not being in line with some of what we were seeing have the cost changed has there been conversations that from this original presentation that the cost today reflect more accurately what we've discussed as far as what we actually see at the county
Existing costs we've made some modifications those costs were all taken from open jurisdictional information
Yeah so the existing costs kind of for the Tassar SRV sites for example were pulled kind of by the mayor during his campaign based on just available database that he had we were able to kind of clarify and add kind of newer shelter data that we had and just cost estimate because we control those budgets so we were able to give him very precise data for the for the presentation for the overnight shelter costs for example we've had numerous conversations with different providers some come in under that number some come in obviously over that number and so it really is like the average that I think will be a moving target as we negotiate a lot of those contracts but it is it is our baseline and kind of just target basically that we're working off of
Thank you and some of my quick math on your slides tell me that the overnight only shelter coupled with day center cost is actually higher than our 24 hour cost so can you explain to me why there's that cost difference and I'd be interested to know what services are included in your costs for day centers
Yeah okay so the overnight is anticipating that we'd have a lot more folks engaged in the overnight shelter than we would need day center capacity for so not necessarily adding one for one on day center capacity and overnight shelter capacity the idea being that there are a lot of services during the day Rose Haven Blanchet House a lot of different day center capacity the county opened the St. John's Day Center is about to and so just a lot of different services that are already in that daytime capacity libraries for example we're looking to add kind of that link of the overnight shelter so we're not anticipating needing to open very many day centers I think we're looking at four one in each district right now that might not be necessary based on existing services we need to look at that map of current services in those districts but it really lowers the cost because you're able to open more overnight shelter and not as many day centers based on the idea that there will be existing day center kind of service capacity
And what services are included
Oh sorry
That's okay
A lot of presentations this week I apologize the existing so we're again partnering and really looking at Rose Haven is kind of a model that we really think is effective frankly so working with Katie O'Brien over there to look at what she offers I think just from a personal point of view I really want to partner with the state to make sure that we're adding CC coordinated care organization capacity to really get folks on the Oregon Health Plan adding folks who are able to actually enroll individuals in like state benefits federal benefits onsite also talking to behavioral health providers mental health providers really just any nonprofit partner that we already currently work with there's a lot of tables a lot of people who are really engaged already and want to have a hub for connecting with their clients they're already talking to basically on the street so very open to any and all services that anybody's interested in but we've had a lot of success I will say at some of our task sites basically adding nonprofit partners onsite and really bringing them to the clients and using some of those capacities spaces to really bring those services to folks and I'm hoping to do that at a bigger scale in the day centers so anything that you yeah would like to add there I'd be all ears
So the current cost is for operations and facility
Yes
Okay
Yes correct
Thank you and so thank you for indulging me I've run overnight only emergency shelter I've run day centers and I've also run the conversion of an overnight only shelter into a 24 hour shelter there are a lot of reasons that that was done not just about people having access and there was no case management or housing placement dollars in the shelter or the day center those are tough milus to manage and they require a level of skill in staffing that I think it's really important that we're attending to I appreciate some of the people need to make a living wage and folks like me who are qualified mental health practitioners also need to make the kind of money that they should be for the types of services they're providing when we're talking about the acuity that we see so I want us to be really thoughtful about this as it progresses and again would like us to continue to think about this whole continuum one thing I want to ask you Mayor that I didn't ask you before is to consider the change of what time the overnight only shelter would open we've had some really good feedback from severe weather sheltering that a little bit later of a closed time is more enticing for people to come in it's rough to get up at 7 a.m. and so just ask you to consider that as you're moving this work forward and I know I'm taking up a lot of time so that's one of the pieces and then I think just to say yes I've talked about let's look at our whole range of shelter I think we needed to do the same with outreach Sky you and I had a conversation yesterday about the inreach team I was able to create a join and does some really powerful work it's similar to what you're referring to as housing strike teams I want to know how many outreach workers do we have NAV workers these kind of in folks who can do housing placement or a crisis response and we should be evaluating that system as well to again make the right mix of investments because a NAV worker without the ability to place somebody or do rent assistance or client assistance is not a super attractive job folks want to be able to help people when they're working with them so I think we need to reevaluate that entire continuum as well so I will end with saying I look forward to continuing to partner with you all I think there's a lot of work we need to do as a board not even just with you Mayor but with your council as well to make some decisions about what we will invest in to make sure that we're able to not only provide safety off the streets but actually end people's homelessness
Thank you Commissioner
Thank you
I would also just like this is maybe presumptuous but I'm going to send you an invite I think for our meeting next week with Community Solutions and our kind of housing team because I think you or your staff maybe would be a great connection point on that so thank you
Thank you Commissioner Brim Edwards
Thank you thank you so much for being here and sharing your plan I had a preview before and we've had lots of good discussions about it so just to frame up a couple thoughts and then some questions but again thank you for being here I think it's additive to our conversation that we had yesterday with the Portland City Council and I'm also looking forward to hopefully a future conversation with the other cities in the county as well so I think my my big takeaway for the last two years and my time on the commission is the county is not going to solve this by itself nor is the city and that the importance of having sort of integrated urgent action that's coordinated is absolutely essential and so when I first got on the commission we had the record number of deaths on the streets domino known and in the subsequent years those numbers have actually increased because of those numbers and also the the record numbers who are living without shelter died push for stronger urgent response to the unsheltered on our streets so people have basic services bathroom showers a warm safe safe place to sleep and that that was sort of the basic step off the street and hopefully then a path to ultimately to housing and that the county would provide those services from there in addition to having a robust sheltering strategy I believe it was critical to have an integrated plan with the city and with the other cities in the in the county so that again it was a coordinated action that we were using the our joint resources in the most effective way possible I'm really glad that based on our partnership with the city in the past that we pivoted from sort of like one model to really having different shelter different shelter types so that recognizing that one size didn't fit all that whether it was the RV sites the temporary alternative shelter sites safe rest villages the traditional more traditional shelter types we opened up beds at Bybee Lakes really creating a whole network of options so that we wouldn't just have one model to offer people but a variety of different models so I think that those were all very positive we built a community sheltering strategy and so all of those things I think were positive foundation but clearly not enough so I really appreciate the urgency with which you are focused on that thousands of people who are still without shelter so a question I have for you just fundamentally is I'm viewing your plan as additive to our existing network and I'm interested in like hearing from you like is it do you view it as an overlay you have a flex up and a flex down but it's it's not a replacement for some of the other shelter types that we've already put in place that we are seeing bearing rates of success but some success in moving people from shelter into path to housing
Yeah no this is purely additive it surge the reason why we showed you that emergency management slide that is ubiquitous across the United States we're missing surge capacity which forces us to default to disaster recovery and we saw that two weeks ago we have a severe winter event instead of having nighttime shelters that pivoted and just went 24 hours we had to go and at extreme cost and difficulty add capacity this is traditional surge capacity in most communities that have ended homelessness they had to end unsheltered homelessness first and then their system ramped down as they were able to find and address the need for every individual but it always started with the nighttime to the 24 hour to the housing so this is a natural step that we're missing it's purely flex up flex down that's where reunification comes in all the other additive issues the goal is is we don't want nighttime shelters but Vancouver had a problem and I had breakfast with Mayor McInerney this morning she has three nighttime shelters open now she sees the benefit rapidly setting them up and she expects to close them but if she can't address the people suffering on the street she is now considering keeping them open 365 but only at the need that she has on the street to flex up and flex them
Thank you so the 52 million for biennium that would be additive to the existing system again it's a flex would be a flex up and hopefully in practice it would be a flex down once that's addressed I mean I'm you're nodding so that's a yes because I'm supportive of your funding running requests you've had but I would want to make sure that it's additive because we can't just be sending people into nighttime emergency shelter then with no path
That's right
Ultimately to housing and then a question just this is more about the mechanics in order to implement your plan are there changes in the intergovernmental agreement that you have with the county that are that are needed to actually make this plan work or
I don't believe so it's not something I've referenced
No I don't believe so Commissioner so my understanding was we set up that governance structure so that steering and oversight committee to allow for kind of additional KPIs or additional metrics or I think the mayor will probably present to the steering and oversight committee again related to this plan and maybe some additional needs in the system but that would be the right venue to do that that doesn't change the contract but it is the contract provides for that venue basically for some of those changes
Okay great so it's more about not that you need more flexibility in the IGA but the actual resources to implement it and that it's additive to the work that's already been done jointly together my last question and this is somewhat unrelated but it gets to sort of jurisdictional responsibilities and clearly say we flex up one of the things then we have people on their off the street safely off the streets but on their way to housing but the clearly a lack of housing options right now so I'm interested both the city of Portland and Metro have the responsibility for like housing production and I'm wondering how you're marrying this plan with the city's other responsibility on the housings on the housing side and sort of how that all fits together so because a lot of people have been pointing at the county and we have a very clear very clear jurisdictional responsibilities but housing production is is not one of them so curious about how when you we have people on the path they have to be a path to somewhere
Right I'm going to redefine jurisdictional responsibility as mayor I have three key responsibilities right away in infrastructure and public safety when we have hundreds of people dying it's not about who's going to provide housing or any of those requirements it's about making sure the suffering on the street has got to end so I want to make sure all of you understand I know we're going to talk about you know passing the ball and who's responsible for the homeless but I want to I want to really bring us back it's not about whose ball and do we take it home it's I have citizens and neighbors dying on the street tonight tonight it is no longer about whose should be funding or not it is Portland's responsibility as mayor it is my fundamental responsibility to make sure everybody has a safe bed tonight to live so I want to kind of break it down to that most basic Pavlovian or excuse me the hierarchy of needs but jurisdictional responsibility will share it wherever it is traditionally it used to be Portland we were always responsible for adults and the county was responsible for families and kiddos children up until 2017 so we split that up the county took it all on and we're saying we're here to help we're going to help and I'll turn over the housing strike team over to Sky to really handle where in that continuum can Portland play a part
Yeah Commissioner it's a great question so working closely with the folks who are in those bureaus because it's not my area of expertise but partnering really heavily with the Portland Housing Bureau and also our permitting folks because we want to make sure that now that we don't have housing bond dollars kind of for Metro or the city we need to think a little more creatively about increasing that capacity we're already looking We're already looking at existing dollars, how better to use them in order to create even more units. The mayor's also been focused on kind of innovative approaches that happen in other cities around the country. So, like Atlanta, we were just talking to an organization called PadSplit. So, really focusing on how do we maximize the current stock of housing? How do we increase that stock of housing? How do we create private development incentives? So, the housing production strategy has a lot of those pieces, and there's folks working really hard to increase that. I think in the immediate term is what I'm personally focused on for folks that are in our shelters or on our streets right now. How do we connect them with existing units? We're also working with different affordable housing providers. There are some vacancies and there are some units available. So, really making sure that we're matching those units effectively and efficiently. Kind of back to Commissioner Singleton's point, I think those inReach teams, really precise and resource-rich housing navigation is something that I think we can improve upon, frankly. And I think that coordination piece would really help just connect to existing units. But we do know we need more. So, I think also working with PHB on longer-term solutions. I will just say, one example is a couple of weeks ago, HUD contacted PHB about a building that they could basically sell or lease for a longer-term basis for certain purposes. So, like shelter and then converting to housing in the longer term. If we had some funding opportunity in the next couple of years, could we use it for shelter just in the immediate term? So, that's just one opportunity. I don't know if it'll pan out, but we're looking kind of under every rock to see what we can do to increase that housing supply. Personally, I think density is something that Portland doesn't do very well. And so, I think anything we can do to create denser kind of lots within the central city, that's something I've seen in other cities that's been really effective. So, especially with an urban growth boundary. But there's a lot of folks who are working on creating that increased supply over the next coming years. I think I'm focused on trying to create that navigation to the existing units that we do have available.
I appreciate that answer. And it would be, I think, useful to sort of daylight the work that's happening so we can actually see, is it adequate? Just as we're like pressure testing our systems, like why are people, once they get in shelter, seeming to be, you know, our, one of the numbers that came out yesterday, which was disappointing, was the flow-through numbers, exits from shelter to housing. Instead of 40%, it was 20%. And some of the conversations like, well, they're getting stuck because there's nowhere to go. And so, just like we need to, at the county, focus on the places where we need to have a more effective system, it also, I think, would be very helpful to better understand what exactly is being done, how many units, and so that we can sort of break down the barriers and make it more transparent where we need to prioritize dollars or our efforts. So, I appreciate getting that and thanks for sharing at high level what you're doing.
Absolutely. I think, you know, necessity being the mother of invention, I think we have an opportunity right now with more limited resources to really develop those creative solutions. So, happy to partner and daylight all those pieces as well. And we can put it on a website page or anything like that, too.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Sky for being here this morning. I just have a handful of questions and ditto to the questions that have been asked by my colleagues so far. My first question has to do with the feedback that you received from the 50 providers. Could you share just the type of feedback that you received?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the mayor is referring to our current Request for Proposal listening session. So, before we released that, we had a listening session with different providers, really good turnout, as the mayor mentioned, a lot of different feedback. So, I think people who brought up the cost per night kind of of different overnight shelters that they're seeing and not necessarily seeing that broken down in the budget, excitement to partner and looking for ways to kind of contribute to this missing link. I think there's excitement among the provider community about the different pieces. So, maybe folks who haven't been involved in creating day centers or day services before who are interested in doing that, I think concern about the connection to resources and how that mechanism will be put in place, transportation, connection to housing, those kind of pieces. Some feedback about families and just the need for that system to be increased. A lot of these folks, the mayor and I have both known personally, and so really just a lot of feedback about, we appreciate you leaning into this, let us partner with you, let us figure out kind of how to move forward to add this different piece. That was before the Request for Proposal. Now, we're in that Request for Proposal period, and it's very legalistic. And so, we're not allowed to discuss anything with providers until next Monday, when it will be finalized. But we're excited and hopeful that there are a lot of folks who have responded to that. So, we can just have qualified providers for all those different services and then make the hard decisions about where we put different resources and how we increase.
Got it, great. And then, I think I asked you this the other day, Mayor, just with our HRS system, how does that, just if you can explain again how your plan is additive to that and how the HRS, if any, if they're going to be able to provide feedback and what does that collaboration look like moving forward would be great.
Forgive me, Commissioner, how will the homeless service providers?
No, HRS.
The HRS?
Yes.
I think it's an important forum. The Steering and Oversight Committee, I think the first meeting I had was, Chair, let's meet every month, you know, because it's an emergency. Let's meet and talk about a lot. And I brought forward contract changes to the provider contracts for bed utilization, stay limits, and engagement requirements so we can create a flow-through system, so it's additive. So, having the nighttime shelters that will have their own stay limits, but then having an existing 24-hour system with 90-day stay limits with being trauma-informed. So, if a caseworker has somebody engaged knowing, it can be extended so long as that participant is engaging, because the 24-hour shelter is very expensive. So, it's an asset we want to fully utilize. And then moving the goal into permanent. The HRS is where we're going to really have these conversations about, hey, let's look at the average stay of the system. Are we happy with the average stay being, you know, 191 days? Once we see it, we're going to say, no, it's a sticky system. You know, my neighbor's been in there for over two years. Is that what we want? And so, we need to daylight those and then discuss it as a group and then make modifications. And it's just dialing up and down the different resources to make sure that that flow, that system is really moving back and forth. So, I think the HRS is going to be a very valuable, a very valuable tool for us, a conversation, to allow us to be more of a sports car than an ocean liner.
Yeah, yeah, great. Appreciate, appreciate that. And then the final question, I believe Counselor Simpson asked this question a few weeks ago when you, when you guys presented. Could you share about just the impacts out east? I know a lot of the leaders out in East County, they're concerned. Could you, could you share just the overall, your strategy around?
Yeah. So, we were looking at, how do we roll this out? Do we do it based on district or neighborhood or area? And we thought we can't do it because what happens is you have a nomadic group and you're just, if you do a camp removal, then all of a sudden, that person's just moving to another community and you can't have that. So, we're going to make it accretive where it's all four corners of the city as we ramp up. Our goal is to get to 300 empty beds and then really start focusing on the outreach, really have an outreach out there saying, hey, you know, you're in this business's corridor, you can't be there. I want to help. You can't stay here, you know, but I have a resource for you. What do you want? And then have a list of resources. If we have empty 24-hour shelter beds and we're able to do coordinated entry, boom, we use it, a nighttime shelter, it's available, or a day center, a day shelter. So, we're working with all those resources to really tie it in. But East Portland is critical. It's where I have two shelters. And when we did our reset downtown, we didn't reset and make downtown better. We didn't make Portland better. We just pushed an awful lot of people. And the day we did the reset last year, there was that 90-day, the Fentanyl reset, my day center and, or the day center I partnered with, had a ring of tents around it. That's not really helping at all. And so, your point is, and our recognition, we have to provide all services to all four corners of our city at the same time, not allow it to just be improving downtown.
And then two more questions. Lastly, you said you're working with the DA's office and I'm assuming Portland Police, the Behavioral Health Team, and our sheriff's office as well, as far as ensuring that folks that are in their care have pathways to housing. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. So, obviously, we need more services for all of those pieces. But yes, we are in active conversations with all those partners and trying to create as many pathways as possible and resources for them to get folks into shelter or housing.
Great, very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore.
Thank you. Yeah, I kind of want to start with your thinking around how your plan fits in with our overall approach to addressing homelessness. Because one of the things that I have shared in conversations with Metro councilors and city councilors and even legislators is a desire that we work in partnership so that it is one approach and not different entities having different strategies with duplicative and potentially not coordinated response. So, I'd love you to articulate how you view this within that larger total response.
And it's, it's a big question. We will work with anybody who wants to join our momentum, our movement. But it goes back to that North Star. At the end of the year, we want to make sure that everybody who wants a bed has one. And if that's your goal, it's our goal. But if it's not, then we're, we have to move forward as a jurisdiction because it's a public safety issue. The discussions, the planning, the programs, the 10-year plan to end homelessness, those are all very important because it's a big issue. But unsheltered homelessness are those people suffering today. So, I don't think I have an answer, Commissioner. You know, I don't have a bold statement, if you will, other than we will work with anybody and everybody. And I'm happy to say, all of the conversations I've had have been positive and we're moving forward. So, I don't know.
Yeah, I would just offer, Commissioner, I think the homelessness response system is part of that, how we articulate kind of those pieces of the system. I think this is something the mayor's bringing forward as an additional piece that he sees a need for. But I would also say we're already doing some of that, frankly. So, the city's overseeing, you know, 1,000 different units right now. And a lot of those are integrated into the entire system. Like, we see that as part of a whole. Those 200 overnight shelter beds that we added in January were part of the severe weather response, are part of communications with outreach teams all across the county. I'm on a call once a week with different outreach providers, many of them county providers who know about those beds, have gotten flyers about those beds, are passing out that information to folks around the community. So, we're already integrating a lot of those pieces, frankly, into the larger system and will continue to do so.
And I, based just on what she said, let's use the ATRAP and the HRS as our point. It's good. And during my campaign, I said, I'm going to wrap my arms around it because it's been fully baked. We can't be blowing things up. It calls for 1,000 new beds, yes. And ending unsheltered homelessness by 50%, I'm saying, yes, I'm all in. But I'm also going to be clear, we're going to do the other 50% because the program doesn't go far enough, fast enough. And that's our responsibility as Portlanders and Portlanders. So, you see, it's a program that was fully baked, a lot of hours went into it. We're going to say, yes, and we're not going to point fingers anymore. We're going to take any relationship we have, work together, and take this big lift and accomplish it at the end of the year.
On, you have a slide that references the ATRAP Behavioral Health. And then you list out some specific targets of number of beds or slots. Are you just restating the ATRAP goal or is that, is the city saying, we're taking that on?
That's literally restating the plan. Yeah. So, just an emphasis on partnering on, with the Multnomah County. We developed that legislative proposal in the ATRAP with a lot of community partners, but was a huge part of kind of one of those major goals within ATRAP. So, I just wanted to reiterate that we're all full steam ahead and really need those resources.
Well, I wildly object. I'm going to be very honest. I think this is written by people who don't know very much about people with severe persistent mental illness and their rights. Why exactly would we want to create 100 secure residential treatment beds for our houseless population? That is not a voluntary setting. We don't have the authority to place somebody in a secure residential facility that could help a state hospital. They need that capacity. I'm pretty sure that number came from the OHSU study about residential capacity, which has everything to do with the state hospital and nothing to do with homelessness. I look at this and I see a lot of voluntary, great options, of which I'm wildly supportive, for people who experience substance use disorder. And all I see are involuntary options, of which Medicaid will not pay and of which cause tremendous trauma to people. That's our response to people with severe mental health. And I get this is not your plan.
Yeah.
But I have to, I have to say, I ran on some of these issues, I have articulated some of these issues, that we do not have a system that can address our houseless community who experience severe persistent mental illness. And, and until we do that, there will be a significant number of individuals in our community who we will continue to fail over and over again. Do you know what the average civil commitment stay is in Portland?
I don't.
30 days. Do you know where the majority of people who are discharged go?
Street.
To the street.
Yeah.
Do you know what percentage of people are either recommitted or arrested within one calendar year? Nearly 50. Do you know what one civil commitment, if it were to go the whole 180 days, costs on average? $321,000. Do you know how much of that is covered by Medicaid? Zero. So, I'm not blaming you, but I have had this critique, and I have this critique in your plan as well. And it's in every plan, that we are not looking at our adult population with the lever, level of granularity we need to have paths for success for people who experience very different challenges.
Yeah.
I am nervous about a congregate shelter-heavy approach when it comes to people who may be experiencing a mental health crisis, not only for them and the appropriateness of that setting for them, but the appropriateness of them in a mix of individuals. And is that going to be more than that setting can really handle? So, you know, I'm encouraging that we dig deeper on some of these things, that we have some hard conversations about who does this approach work for? And I do think it works for people. Who does it not work for?
You bet.
Why? And what is the right response for that population? And I'm going to continue to say this to every group I meet with. People with severe mental illness are not any percentage more likely to be violent. They are not, it is not criminal to be a person with a severe mental illness. And that if we want to get better outcomes for a population experiencing severe persistent mental illness, we have got to find an approach in which they will willingly engage, or it does not work. So, I put that out there because I think this is yet another plan that is deficient in that area. And, and I really don't want us to get on a path that is going to continue to criminalize having a disability. My last question, as a former contractor, I'm very familiar with building code, and that does fall under your purview for the city of Portland. One of the issues when I am talking about how do we potentially convert space into residential, which I'm a big supporter of, I think we have to right-size our commercial property, particularly office space, maybe some storefront space. What is the right amount for this city? And what do we do with that excess capacity? And, you know, many people are like, well, why don't we turn into housing? And I have a whole conversation with them about, when you change use, you are now required to meet current residential code.
Right.
And that is nearly fiscally impossible, truthfully. Once you've built a building, you can't really, at any reasonable cost, reach some of those. And so, a question I had is, can you and have you explored the ability to work with the state to get permission to do a conversion code, which would allow health and safety to take the front stage, but also some reasonable exchange, knowing that those buildings will still be significantly safer than most of our residential settings? our residential settings that were built, you know, before the 1990s? So that's my question, is what are we doing to try to spur some of this potential conversion?
But right now, there are two things I would mention. We're working on an officer residential funding through the state right now, so we can get a bucket of money, so we can get a couple of those monsters, at least with cranes on top of them. And that comes with direct subsidies. That's one thing. The second thing is, we do have a new TIP district that the council is voting on next week. The downtown TIP district has several hundred million dollars, and the goal is to not only revitalize, but to repurpose those assets into a different sort of urban core. But it does come with subsidies, and it will come with codes when those credits come available. And if there's anything we can do on the city side, in Calgary, they will permit you in 90 days when you do a conversion. They're serious about conversions. They have 1,200 conversions in two years. We've had none. So it's about a philosophy. But we also have to know that if you put a dollar into downtown Portland, it's going to be a dollar and five the following year, as opposed to 95 cents. And unfortunately, we have falling, we have rising vacancies, falling values. And so the investors, through the ULI note I had made, people are redlining Portland right now for investments. So we flip it by improving livability, restoring safety, sanitation, all those things, and caring. And I am certain that that piece of dirt, which is the most valuable in the United States, will have a resurgence and a renaissance.
And just speaking to the code changes, I think the housing kind of seismic code just honestly is the most expensive. And so anything we can do to kind of encourage maybe some different thinking around that, or certain buildings, I think, are better than others, frankly. And so we've been able to get some emergency relief on certain buildings and ones that have a little bit better structure, frankly, than others. So I think thinking a little bit more creatively on the edges of which buildings could actually qualify for that. And if I may, Commissioner, I think we would welcome truly any partnership from you and your expertise on the mental health piece of the system. I think that's not my area of expertise, and I think it would be really helpful to hear what you have to say. I think we are, we would love anything and everything as a tool to help people on the street. I think we have a lot of first responders who are very tired and don't feel like they have the tools to address that. So anything that you think should be added to the system, I, we will hold your hand and go to the legislature, whomever, and say, yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, thank you so much for coming here today and presenting to the entire board. I really, really have appreciated the conversations and the questions that everybody has brought to this and the points that have been brought up. I want to say a couple of things about your presentation. First, I really, or in how you started today, Mayor, with the, with the focus on housing and the importance of housing as a, as kind of a foundational thing for the issue that we are trying to address. I know, you know, it has been something, you know, something that has been shared widely that even, you know, when we talk about places that are impacted so much by addiction and, and drugs, like we have, you know, where, like we've seen Fentanyl. And those, that is happening all across the country, but in areas where housing prices are lower, you're not seeing that impact in homelessness like, like we are having in, in Portland. And so I think that that is a key thing. I appreciate that Commissioner Brum Edwards brought this up. I also know that Commissioner Singleton has a request for this board to receive a briefing from the Portland Housing Bureau on, on that. And so I'm looking forward to, to getting that scheduled and arranged and so that we can have that visibility in front of this board as well. And I appreciate the, the conversation that we've had today about the overall system and appreciate Commissioner Singleton bringing that up. You know, one of the things that I think is going to be key for all of us in this work and something that we, you know, will be talking about at the Steering and Oversight Committee is just the cost and effectiveness across that system. You know, so looking at, and that has been, you know, a data request that have come through the SOC, the Steering and Oversight Committee, but also, you know, as part of your presentation today, the, the different costs for different types of shelter balanced with, you know, what are the services that are actually included in that cost? And to Commissioner Moyer's point, who are the populations that we are trying to serve with these different types of shelters and making sure that we've got that variety there? And so that is something that we've been working on with our community sheltering strategy, with the work that we've done in the, the ATRAP. But I think the question is, you know, overall, what is needed to move people effectively into the right housing or the right next situation for them? Maybe that's treatment or recovery. I think the, the Q2 report that we saw yesterday from the ATRAP shows like we have to be doing a better job of that, and we have to be doing investments in that as well. Because that's going to be very important for the, the success of our overall system, including the flow-through, right? Because, you know, the surge that, you know, the surge in investment that these overnight shelters are a critical piece of doing, is only going to be able to surge down if we're able to move people through that system effectively. And that, and so we always, we cannot, you know, take our eye off that ball as we're looking at how do we respond to the crisis. So I appreciate the, the recognition of that and the, and the commitment to work on that. And, and the fact that the surge capacity has to be additive, right? Like, we can't, we can't move away from, uh, the work that we're doing because really the, the, this plan relies on the, our existing system so, so much. And, and those shared ATRAP goals between the city and the county and our East County cities about moving people into housing. So, you know, we have to be working together, you know, to get the funding that we need to fund the entire system, the surge capacity that's happening, the, the, the things that are at risk based on the current budget outlook for both the city and the county and the changing dynamics with the, or the changing forecast with the SHS measure. And so, you know, we have to be having this, this process. So I'm looking forward to continuing to, to work with you, to work with the city, to work with our partners and figuring out how are we going to make this entire system work? Because again, I will just end with, you know, this is something that we have heard loud and clear, like, we have to be solving this issue for our community. It's something, it is the right thing to do because there are way too many people, thousands too many people, who are living on our streets right now without the supports and the, and the connections and the pathways to, to save healthy life that, that they deserve. So thank you so much. More to come and more conversations to come on this, but really appreciate the time today of you being here, taking time out of your busy day. It's great. I feel like we've had such good city-county conversations, both with the joint session yesterday and then the chance to hear about this today. So thank you.
I agree. And Chair and Commissioners, thank you for this honor. You know, it has been my pleasure to get to know each and every one of you this last many weeks and certainly many years. And I know that that acrimony of the past has just absolutely ended. Working together closely is going to be the measure of our success. And if we're successful in our partnership and relationship, to think that the byproduct would be caring for our citizens, then that's just what our really goal is. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're right at noon at our, you know, our normal time that we adjourn. I did want to check to see if anyone had some remarks that they wanted to share briefly, you know, so that we can have a few minutes for that. So Commissioner Jones Dixon?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to just acknowledge from the, the public testimony this morning that I was, I came in late, but just want to let the community members know that, that we, that we heard them. And then also to remind everybody, as far as the school-based counselors, they're not only serving the students, they're also serving the parents as well. My wife and I received a wellness check after an incident that happened at my son's school, and that was extremely helpful for our family. It just reassured us that, that our kids are being taken care of and the families are as well. So I just wanted to say thank you to those that came this morning.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Brum?
Come back to me.
Okay, Commissioner Singleton.
Thank you, Chair. I want to echo some of what Commissioner Jones Dixon shared and thank the folks who came out this morning, not only for coming out and sharing, but also for the work that you do every day. It's one of the populations that I said, I can't work with kids anymore. I just wanted to try and do way too much and bring them all home when there were, when folks were struggling, when I was working with foster youth. So I just really appreciate the work that goes into supporting young people and all of the, the trauma and chaos that they often have in their lives. And I think rest assured that as the budget process moves forward, there are a lot of different proposed cuts that come out of the restraint scenario that our departments were given. And I feel very confident in this board, not only with the chair's proposed budget, but in the board looking at some of those community priorities and finding ways to make sure we continue to fund the things that touch our most vulnerable community members and provide that support to them. Lastly, I want to say there's been a lot of conversations about homelessness this week. We had an SHS conversation on Monday evening as well. So I know that we were all there yesterday, but just to bring some line of sight to that other table and conversation, it's very similar to what you heard, that we really need to be thinking about regionally, how are we addressing this issue? What does it look like as we move forward? How do we collaborate? Excuse me. How do we collaborate and begin to tell the stories of what is working well, but also assessing what is not and be able to make those changes? So I think we have that same sort of collaborative spirit and desire to examine our systems from affordable housing development through emergency shelter and street outreach, and think about how we can get there as a region together to address those, those needs of our community. So more to come as that SHS conversation progresses, as well as, I think we have an upcoming Steering and Oversight Committee meeting, where I'm hoping we'll dig more into some of the data requests that we had at the previous one. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Singleton. Commissioner Moyer.
Yeah, I appreciate what everyone said. And I continue to be very centered on when we have to have hard conversations about our budget constraints, making sure that we do all that we can to the greatest extent possible, preserving direct services that we're providing to people's. And this will be a hard process, but I really appreciate when people come and explain the importance of the different work that we're doing and the impact of different proposals. I think it's incredibly valuable to our decision-making process. So thank you for that. On the conversation related to our homelessness response, and I think that I alluded to this in my questioning of the mayor, I, I implore all of us and our fellow locally elected representatives and our representatives down in Salem, that we be as coordinated as humanly possible in a resource-restricted environment. We cannot duplicate. We cannot afford to overlap. We have got to be open to calling questions on what works and what doesn't. And, you know, and I do think at some point, we need to have conversations about who does what and what is that commitment. And we are, but I'm, I'm in this new moment of, of a reexamination of how we're approaching this. I am very, very interested in working with our other elected bodies to create a plan that incorporates what every entity is doing in, into this coordinated approach so that we are maximizing the positive impact we're having on our community and it not feel like we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, but that we are all looking at our individual resources, our individual expertise, and what we're bringing to the table to put together the best possible plan for our community. And so I, I'm committed to doing all I can in that process, and I'm asking all of our locally elected officials to be open to that approach to this moment in time.
Thank you, Commissioner Moyer. Commissioner Brum Edwards, are you ready?
I am. And actually, it was, I'm just going to sort of springboard off Commissioner Moyer. So I'm, I'm glad I, I'm glad I waited. Because over the last five or six days, I've got a lot of questions from the community about the shortfall that was revealed on Friday, I think to the community for the first time for a lot of people. There may have been discussions about it, but certainly was not in a public way that the community felt they were fully informed. And people were like, were you surprised? And my, I think what I was surprised about was that the unveiling didn't happen in a conversation here at the, at the board, at the board table with a discussion about how we were, the process by which we were going to prioritize things. And there wasn't a conversation about what, some of the commitments that I feel like I sat here at the table, voted for the IGA because it had the community sheltering strategy in it, which had a set of commitments. And then to have there to be an open discussion, like, we may not, we may not fulfill our commitments to the community sheltering strategy. So what I was surprised about, that there was an ask and also a sort of backtracking, I felt, on some of the things that we, as a board, had voted on and committed to in terms of our community sheltering strategy and how we prioritize things. And I think it left the impression in the broader community that there was like mismanagement of funds and that there, because it was a surprise and it wasn't laid out as, and here are the steps we're going to go through to like, deal with the different components of the shortfall, that it left the impression of, that the county didn't have a strategy in terms of how we're going to approach prioritization and spending our, our resources. And it had very widespread implications, I think, for our relationships with our other partners who we absolutely need to be walking, you know, hand in hand with them as we approach this and coordinating our resources. So I, I would hope as we move forward, that it's, it's not entirely just a budget conversation, but that we plan for some times to have some pretty explicit conversations, since we have, we have a new commission and there are only two of us who are here when some commitments were made and the IGA was voted for, but that we have, that may be very intentional about those conversations so that they're transparent and people understand the fundamentals of our budget and how we're going to prioritize and how we're going to most effectively use our resources. So that just my requests going forward.
Thank you. So thanks, everyone. I, I think a way would be helpful to share some additional details about the Homeless Services Department's budget gap that was announced last week. And just, you know, I know I've given, I gave each of you a heads up about the gap before it was public on Friday, but the fact of the matter is that our entire proposed budgets from departments were going to be made public on Friday because of this. So the public's awareness and the public's ability to learn about it was, was on Friday when those budget letters were, were being transmitted. And there are gaps all over the county. You know, we have, I think the, the degree to which we would have a gap, that Multnomah County would have, a $100 million plus deficit, was daylighted to Metro and to the Board of County Commissioners in a public session on April 16th, 2024, almost a year ago. But the, the difference is that we have reached the budget cliff earlier than expected because of the change in the forecast. So we, we, you know, we showed that there was a cliff that was coming. It was just expected in 2027, not 2026. The, you know, the, the Homeless Services Department was able to really see the, the amount and really clarify what that amount of the gap would be when the quarter-two spending for FY '25 closed. And so that's really what generated this. And it was a very short time period between when they discovered what the number was beat and when those budget transmital letters were going to be shared publicly. And so the public, you know, the public found out with, in alignment with our, with our budget process. And I, and it was important to me to really underline and raise, and clearly raise awareness about this gap because just like the things that we, you know, that we committed to, like the community sheltering strategy and all of those other things that we committed to doing when we passed last year's budget, all of that is potentially impacted by this deficit that we have. So that, because, so it is important that we are in alignment with the city as we're talking about the gaps that they are facing, the, the desires to invest more in the surge capacity, that we that we are really working together to identify how we can help close the budget gaps for these critical services that we know our community absolutely needs us to have and wants us to have, and what we need to be doing as governments and as partners to effectively address our homelessness crisis. You know, I think that looking at and making the asks of Metro, of the state, especially considering the state's increased budget, right? I think they're the only government that I've heard of this upcoming fiscal year that actually has an increase in the revenues that they are receiving. And, and I, and it's important to me, because I don't want us to lose our momentum that we've had. In the first three years of the SHS measure, we have methodically been building out our services. We have been, you know, working to get dollars out the door just as quickly as we could as we were building this up. But we also know that there, it was a highly volatile, it was a highly volatile revenue source. We have had, you know, inaccurate expectations of money that would be coming in, both higher and lower. We have had unanticipated funds come to us mid-year. Metro required that Multnomah County spend 95% of our last tranche of one-time-only funds, which totaled $72 million in FY24. So that's in addition to another $150 million in unanticipated revenue that came to the county, and those monies were all one-time only. So, you know, this, this board, and I'm not saying this, this board, but past versions of this board, you know, we, we did invest those dollars, but that cliff is real in the ongoing funds. And so I think it's really important that we work together to figure out how we are going to close that and keep some of these critical services that we know we need and people are relying on and are helping, you know, address our crisis, including the shelter beds that we have both in the city of Portland and other cities in Multnomah County, and figuring out how we can support the city's priorities and what they want to do, addressing that. So that's a big job, and the only way that we're going to be doing it, be able to do that, is to continue talking and working together. And that's what I'm, that's what I am very, very much anticipating will be, lots of conversations over the next several weeks as we, as our budget moves forward, as the city's budget moves forward. So just appreciate the conversation today.
I did, I do think, though, I'll just say, I hope that we have a commission discussion about it, because, in addition, and I'm glad, Commissioner Jones Dixon, that you mentioned this, the public testimony we had that was raised, some questions raised, because, I mean, I think we, we need to work, work through those, the questions that get raised in, in public and, and share that. Because frankly, we got notice of the press conference and the release of it an hour before it happened, in a letter. And we didn't get actually the budget transmital letters till later on in the afternoon. So that whole, the information that got shared out publicly, it was without us having even the budget transmital letters. We got them mid-afternoon, which was after all the announcements. So again, I think we, we have some really big challenges, and it's much better to have those conversations in a public forum, in which we're all part of it, because we're all going to have to be part of the solution of how we're going to prioritize, in this case, fewer resources than we thought we had, or if we do get additional resources, where those get applied.
Yeah. And, and this board will, I mean, we are going to be having our Homeless Services Department come before this board to share proposals about what they're, what they're going to do to help close the gap that we have this fiscal year. Because again, I'll just remind folks that part of the updated revenue forecast was, was not just for FY26, but actually changed the dollars that we are going to be having for this year that we're currently in. So they're going to be bringing that forward, and we will be contemplating that as a board. The FY26, the conversations around that, like specific dollars in investment, those are, those are budget conversations, and I would look to Jenny Madcor for clarifying, but there are limits to the conversations that this board can have about next year's budget things, based on state law, state budget law. What I do think that we can have the conversations about as the board is, as we are doing things like contemplating the, the mayor's proposal for surge, you know, surge funding for overnight beds, and how that fits into the work and the decisions that we are going to be doing at the Steering and Oversight Committee, having a board conversation about what are our shared priorities, or what are the different, or maybe even not shared priorities, but priorities of each commissioner, so that we can, so that when Commissioners Singleton and I are in those rooms, we can be talking about and bringing those forward. So, so thanks, everyone. I appreciate the conversation today. I also appreciate the folks that have showed up for this meeting. There will be much more of that to come, I think, from hearing from constituents, which is all part of our process. On that note, I did want to just give a quick update. The budget survey is going to close on Monday, March 3rd, that my office is leading, and we have had more than 3,000 people share their priorities and fill out that survey, which is really going to be helpful for me, as I'm going to be working on my budget over the next several weeks. Marina is going to enter the survey link for online viewers, and people can also find it on my budget website. In the last few weeks, I've also met with over 125 community leaders. They're primarily, you know, our stakeholder partners, nonprofits, mayors, superintendents, community advocates, to hear firsthand from their perspectives about what their challenges are. And so I'm looking forward to continuing that work. A lot of conversation, a lot of input is really good and really important, and that's going to continue. And it will just, you know, as we move through this process, and especially when we move into the public, some of my budget on April 24th, and then it becomes before the board. So thank you, everyone. There be no further business. We are adjourned.